January 11th, 2023, meeting of the Anacortes Planning Commission. And looking around, we have two commission members not present, Mr. Molino and Ms. Ruther. The other five are here. Does everybody have a chance to review the minutes of the December 14th meeting? Any questions? None being heard, we'll proceed with our agenda. We have two items of old business. We have two items of old business tonight. Both continued public hearings that were begun last, at our last meeting, and remain open for public comment today. Ms. Pollard, do you have a presentation to review the conditional use permit request?
Yes, thank you, Chair. Hello, Commissioners, Members of the public. This is a pre-decision, open record hearing for conditional use permit application CUP 2022-005. It's a conditional use permit to establish an owner occupied and owner operated, single sleeping room, bed and breakfast within an existing residence. This presentation is a quick overview of information found in the staff report, which is part of the agenda packet. The applicant presented a application, conditional use application to the planning department to establish a bed and breakfast, properties located at 2812 Morrison Court, which is in the R2 zone, and no changes to the residence or the site were proposed or required. Under the Anacortes Municipal Code, all short-term lodging rentals, meaning stays less than 30 days, are grouped under the overnight lodging category. All overnight lodging types, except for bed and breakfasts, are prohibited in residential zones. Establishing a bed and breakfast in our low-density or medium-density residential zones require this conditional use permit process. The process is a Type IV review, which is a city council decision. It begins with a pre-application meeting with city staff, a pre-application neighborhood meeting. There is a notice of application that gets posted, 21-day written public comment period, review by city departments, a pre-decision, open record, public hearing, which is where we are now, and then the last step is a closed-record decision hearing with city council. Requirements of operating a bed and breakfast within city limits include that the owner must be the operator of the facility and must reside on the premise, that all sleeping rooms, both the owners and the guests, must be within the main residential building. In residential zones, it is required that the property have no outward appearance of a business, and parking must meet the standards of Anacortes Municipal Code Title 19, Chapter 64, which states two parking stalls be provided for the use of the single-family residents, the owners, and one parking space per guest room be provided onsite for the bed and breakfast The subject property, which is outlined here in red, is located off of Morrison Court, outlined in blue, via Sunset Avenue. The surrounding neighborhood is zoned R2 and are primarily developed with other single-family dwelling units. Here's another vicinity map showing the zoning designation of the area, and as you can see, the site is mainly surrounded by other R2 properties. Morrison Court is a dead-end street, subject property is located on the west side and is developed with a two-car attached garage and surface parking areas. You can see here that the submitted site plan shows a total of four designated parking spaces, all provided onsite, two located within the attached garage for use by the owners, and two surface parking spaces located east of the garage on an existing gravel parking area. Please note that though the code only requires one additional parking space, or I should say, one space per sleeping room, the applicant will be providing two spaces for their one sleeping room in case their guests are not able to arrive together. To grant a conditional use permit, the decision-maker must find that the use will be consistent with the CUP or the conditional use permit criteria, and based upon the application, the findings of fact and conclusions of the staff report, which I will be happy to go over in greater detail if the Commissioners would like, staff recommends that the Planning Commission recommend approval of the conditional use permit with the following conditions: that the site plan shown here and shown in your packet as stamped and dated approved be the site layout for the permit, and that the applicant must obtain a City of Anacortes business license prior to operating the bed and breakfast. Unless the Commissioners would like me to go into more detail on information in your packet in the staff report, that concludes my presentation.
Any questions or items for the Commissioners? This public hearing for this decision was carried over from our last meeting, so it remains open for public comment. If there is anyone who would like to make a presentation, please do so now. Do we have anyone online? Okay. With nobody wanting to make a presentation today, we will close the public hearing and open it for discussion amongst the Commissioners. Okay, I think we reviewed it pretty much in-depth last, at the last meeting, and I have no questions either. I will entertain a motion at this time.
Mr. Chair.
Yes.
Make a motion that we recommend the approval of CUP 2022-005 with the conditions as presented this evening.
Second. Okay, there's been a motion and a second. Shall we take a roll vote?
Commissioner Curtis, how do you vote?
Yes.
Commissioner Graff?
Yes.
Commissioner McKenzie?
Yes.
Commissioner Juretsky?
Yes.
And Commissioner Martin?
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, moving on to our second agenda item. This is a continued public hearing on the bonus height provision moratorium in the R4 use zone west of Commercial Avenue, and Mr. Miesmer, I believe you're planning on a quick update for us as well.
So, Mr. Chair, Members of the Commission and the audience, at the Planning Commission's meeting December 14th, 2022, the Commissioners opened the public hearing on the R4 bonus height provisions, in the R4 use zone again, for AMC 1942050C, which allows for the height to increase from 40 foot to 50 foot in the R4 use zone, with at least 25% of the units not more than 600 square feet. So written public comment was received prior to that hearing, and it was included in the December 14th packet, and I have included it as well in tonight's packet, along with one additional comment, written comment that was received. So at its December 14th meeting, the Planning Commissioners instructed staff to draft the findings to recommend Concept F, leave the bonus height provisions in place with no changes to the city council. And the findings have been drafted, and they are in fact in your packet, and I have a copy with me this evening as well. What I'd like to do is go ahead and pull up those concepts so that the Commissioners So, again, we've, we have gone through these several times, as you all know. These are the concepts, and they're not exactly at the scale I would like, but that's what we have. Again, through Concept F is leave the bonus height provisions in place with no changes. With that, if the, if the Planning Commission has any questions, be happy to answer that. If not, looks like there might be a couple of people from the audience that might want to speak.
Thank you, Mr. Miesmer. Again, this, this matter was carried over from the last meeting, and there were no public comments at the time. The Commission has reviewed all of the written input and the most recent email that we received today. It's now open for any public comments before we resume our deliberations. Is there anyone here who wants to make a presentation? I don't see, do we have one? Okay. Please state your name and just whether you live in Anacortes or not.
My name is Mike Pearl. I live at 1617O Avenue. It's the corner of 17th and O, in town, half a block away from the Fidalgo Flats apartment. I want to start with a little story that happened to me a few, oh, six months, a year or so ago. I was in Highland Hospital at the ER, waiting for someone, and an older gentleman was sitting across from me, and we got to talking a little bit, and he asked me if I was from around here, and I said, "Yeah, I've lived here for a while." And he said, "Well, how long have you been here?" And I said, "Oh, about 35 years or so." He said, "Oh, newcomer, huh?" And I thought that pretty much put me in my place, and he said he was born here, and he was in his 70s, so gave you a little bit of perspective. I'm commenting on the whole issue about the bonus height ordinance. I think it's the height restrictions, all the things that have been involved with this, and I read through all the concepts and stuff, but I just want to make a few comments that are reflective of a lot of people I've spoken with and general comments, too. The BHO experience has been three-plus years of a lot of consternation in the community. We had, I was involved with the group that first was starting to question and object to it. We had a short meeting up at the senior center, 20, 30 people maybe were there. We started a letter petition drive, not a petition, but informational letters out that, leaflets out, ended up asking for the, for an additional meeting, and Mayor Geer had another one up there. We had, you know, it ended up with about 175 people showing up with just a little more public information. I think that's one of the real critical elements in, in all this, you know, whether it's the Planning Commission or the community or whatever, is information, the city council and the planning and all that, they only need to produce information in the local newspaper, and it's in those ads in the back, and I think it gets, it gets short shift in, in reviewing those. I think maybe if there's something that's of particular interest, I thought there would be more people with interest here tonight, but I'm surprised. I wrote also and made a letter in, but it would be, seemed like something that would be a little more, less formal, but more informational for people, and if it was like a one-page insert into the Anacortes American of just some particular issues, it might be more informational for a lot of people. Thought. My general comments are, what would be the current and long-term effect of allowing the BHO moratorium to expire? It's sort of a rhetorical question, I don't expect answers, but it's just a concern regarding the recent requests from the community about the MJB properties and the BHO. All who wrote in recently opposing the comments were citizens of the town, and it seemed like all of those who wrote in support of the policy of the, of the expiration were either paid by the city, makers, for example, other contractors, other developers, and there was a, I think, a letter from one or two people that were involved in the real estate industry. They were the only supporting letters that were in, that were submitted. Everybody else were just citizens. And the, one of the issues was that at the last big public meeting, when we were talking about the bonus height ordinance years or so ago, one of the reps from the Fidalgo Flats was asked who was here with the, with the public presentation, was asked, and that was where there were 150 or so people here, asking what was the, why build the fifth story? Why do you need to do that instead of the four that were, that were the existing zone? And his, his reply was, "With four stories, we could only make 7% on our investment." He said, "With five stories, we could make 11." There was nothing to do about quality of the town or anything else, as far as I was concerned. It seemed like it was, it was only to make more money, whatever effect on the town it had was really irrelevant to him. I should say that I'm a small businessman, too. I'm a small general contractor. I appreciate a profit, try to get one every time I can, but I think, and not, not to, not to sound negative for you folks, because I know we're all citizens of the town and try to do a good job, but I think one of the main citizens of the city council and the Planning Commission is to look out for the citizenry. You know, a lot of people don't catch the news or aware of it, they just see things that happen after the fact, but these are taxpayers, families, local businesses, and the folks that just live here because they love it. This town enriches their, enriches their lives and the lives of their families and their friends, and they love it here, not just because they can make a profit. The developers seem to be getting a bigger handle on what happens in this town, and I think it's maybe to the detriment to some of the people who live here. The people who wrote into this were, were in support of the betterment of the existing citizenry who are here. They are the bulk of the taxpayers, most of these, the developers, you know, they come in and they go, they're in the town, they make their money and they leave, but most of the people here that are concerned about the MJB properties, the BHO situation, this, this idea of bigger is better, and whether it's providing an affordable housing situation, I think is really questionable yet, too. That's, I think there's, there needs to be more information for people who can understand a concept of what can happen here with, with six-story, 65-foot heights in the limitations, is that, that's one of the code things that was happening with the Fidalgo Flats, was there's five stories, theoretically that's 50 feet, but when people say, "Well, how tall is it?" All these codes allow elevators, mechanical contrivances on top of it to be another 10, 12, 15 feet, and I think it would be helpful for the citizenry to understand, for the city to say, "This is the maximum height of all, everything on the building, not just call it to the living space," because I think that's, it gives a false impression of what actually happens here, and I know because I've talked to dozens and dozens and dozens of people. Thanks for your time and your efforts and, and the energy you put into it. There's a lot of good information.
Thank you, sir. Are there any others? So typically, we ask people to restrict their discussions to about three minutes, so if you, if you can summarize.
My name is, my name is Ed Gigan, live just down the street from Mike.
Okay.
Mike spoke on a lot of things that I was thinking about, but like that bonus height thing, Fidalgo Flats has that extra story on top, so it's not 50 feet, it's like 64, 65 feet tall, which, again, doesn't make sense. If I'm told I can build a six-foot-high fence, it's six-foot-high fence. If I put baubles and stuff up eight-foot-high, is that, is that allowed? No, it's not, so that, that kind of bugs me. Fidalgo Flats is a good-looking building, I think it's a great-looking building, not in that neighborhood, doesn't belong there. I hate to see more of those sorts of things in our nice residential areas around town. One thing I'd like to know, and maybe you can answer this for me, is why isn't something like that put out to vote of the people? And something like this, this is a big change for Anacortes, why isn't it put out so we can vote on things like this, to allow these sorts of things to happen? Mike is right, builders come in, they build these places, they're gone. They have no invested interest in Anacortes other than making money on that building. We live here, kids live here, grandkids live here, we're invested in this, in this community. I'm not opposed to big buildings, there's a lot of places, I think, in Anacortes, big buildings can go and would look really good, but not in these residential areas. So that's basically all I have to say. I, I hope you really consider not doing that high building. Thank you.
My name's Mary Jo. I'm going to stand over here because I can't see you. I have a problem with the way makers did their analysis, and in the final report, there wasn't any mention.
Could you speak into your microphone, please? Thank you.
There wasn't any mention in their final report of the report, the document that was presented here over time, that they considered other options to the bonus height provision in the code, and I would have thought that they would have considered other types of housing in order to meet our housing requirement according to the Growth Management Act. That is a concern to me, that other options were not conveyed to the public, that there was any review or consideration done, such as increasing cottage housing, developing possibilities for other types of alternative housing that is more low-key. It's not the big box that towers over this, essentially, one- and two-story, single-family There are incentives, huge incentives, being given to contractors and developers to build these big developments. They get tax breaks that have to be, that have to be absorbed, and the other taxpayers absorb those taxes with no benefit to them personally. They get breaks in the development requirements, they get breaks in fees, and the citizens all have to pick up that tax burden. The development in the R4 area that's west of, of Commercial, they're well-maintained homes, there isn't one commercial or apartment complex in that entire neighborhood, where the R4 east of Commercial has had multiple units of multiple-family developments, and they are now being inundated with high-end townhouses and condos. The, that area doesn't have the infrastructure constrictions like sidewalks and curbs and gutters, the houses are of poor quality, and a lot are run down. Why not concentrate the multifamily apartment complexes, including the, the allowed bonus height that is allowed on that side of Commercial? Why not move and accept that, but close it off to the west side of Commercial and see what happens? I was talking to Matt Miller about a month ago about this very issue, and he said, "The city has not gotten one application for a five-story building, apartment building on the east side of Commercial in the R4 zone." Why not allow the opportunity for developers to come in and do that on east side of Commercial? Hold off through an ordinance or whatever we need to do, don't let big-box sprawl encompass all the R4 in the city. It just will be these spot buildings that are totally out of character in a single-family residential neighborhood that is thriving. It is not in transition like the R4 that is east of Commercial. We can always come back at a later time if it's proven that we need more of the big-box apartment dwellings west of Commercial. Let's slow down, stop, and make an effort to see what happens in the R4 zone that is east of Commercial. It's not working as it is right now because no one's applied for any big bucks, 65-foot stories taking advantage of the bonus height. And another thing, one of the things Fidalgo said they needed to have the fifth floor was because not only was it more economical for them, but if they went above the third floor, the fourth floor, they required an elevator. But that doesn't justify pushing the envelope up to fifth floor, we already know, and they said that because of the elevator, it wasn't economically feasible to just go to four. But we see with a new building at the Family Resource Center site, they are successfully building a four-story building. We have three-story apartment complexes going up that don't require an elevator, and that's what people are building. So it's not proven to be economically, the only, the only way that they can make it economically profitable for them is to build four or more stories. That's not true, and the evidence is in our town, because we are seeing three-story buildings built. That's all. Thanks.
Thank you. Anyone else?
Good evening, council members. I'm Pat Gardner, I'm a resident here of Anacortes. My main concern is height, as many people are that I've spoken to and you're aware of. Anacortes is a unique town, and it's not going to be unique in 10 years, as it is, with all this height, height issues. We get taller and taller along the waterfront area, it's drowning out the residential and commercial or downtown area. We have these heights all around, surrounding the town, it's going to drown it out, and it's getting, and it, there goes your uniqueness of Anacortes. There aren't many towns left like this. You can see it down, on different islands in different parts of Washington State, Oregon. We're losing the aesthetics of this community by letting the height get up there, keeping the minimum of, maximum at four with that extra eight, 10, 12 feet, whatever they need for the air conditioner, whatever unit's on top. But we need to let the public know, there isn't information out there, it's very minute in both the Skagit and the Anacortes papers. We need to, regarding the MJB properties down there, I had mentioned it at a council meeting and spoke to the mayor about this some time ago. Now that they've have, they're paving the streets, I saw a car tonight driving down the streets over there, but up along the fence, there couldn't be, it should be a mural of sorts of what the planned development is. I've lived in other cities where same things are coming up, they put up a big mural of what's expected to be built or planned, so the public can see for themselves a picture, not just words, a picture of details of what type of structures, heights. I know there are going to be trails and walkways and stuff, but hotels, let's find out what their heights are, they're going, if they go beyond four feet or four, four stories, they're going to be drowning out the rest of our community, and Mother Nature is taking havoc, and the ocean rises, and I understand you've got a, what is it, 10-foot or 20, two-foot or whatever margin on the, on the shoreline, we better be, those structures better be prepared. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening, council, this is Robin Dalton, Anacortes resident, and I would just like to reinforce everything I've heard tonight. I don't know these people, but that covers most of my thoughts. And I was born in this county, I have three family members, ashes spread in the bays and rivers around here, and the last thing I want to see is this town turn into a Bellevue with high-rise type, it just doesn't fit here. You need to put your future cap on and realize, down the road, when you add excess, just because people need a place to live and they want to live here, doesn't mean you have to provide that. So we don't need six-story buildings everywhere to cover the cost to, in my mind, meet what the mayor recently acknowledged in the Anacortes American, that bottom line is, is he's happy about revenue, period. And so now we need to hire more police, more firemen, more, whatever services, that doesn't stop. I've lived in places with higher populations, and you think, "Oh, big tax base, it's gonna be easier." Never is. More people, more services, more money, it never stops. Don't ruin Anacortes, be different for a change, and not follow the money, and the MJB and all these other developers just seem to have an outsized source of influence, whether it's campaign donations, or whatever, I don't know. But I, we went to the presentation, MJB here earlier, a month ago or so, and whoever their presenter was, it just really kind of turned me off to have them put a picture of the four brothers who are funding MJB, who are from Anacortes, who feel like they're doing us all a favor. Believe me, it's a business, they're looking at profit, and it's been said, bottom line is, that's what drives that kind of growth. Does it fit here? In my humble opinion, no, and many other people. I, I don't know anybody that I've talked to that agrees with that. Years ago, I don't remember how many years ago, when the city had us all go down and draw pictures and plan what would be acceptable on the, say, the MJB property, which this is the relationship to building heights, because that's what they want to do, is build up. I don't remember anybody saying, or agreeing with, you know, just fill in, you know, all these condos, there was discussion about mixed use of stores, and some condos, and a hotel, and stuff, but not 450 condos. That's, that's what's so mind-boggling to us, is we come to the meetings, and the only questions are for some of these old people that probably moved here from Bellevue, and going, "Where do I get my name on the list to buy one?" It's like, your interest isn't in the community, it's in your wallet, and that just doesn't serve any of us, as Anacortes residents, for the better. So I would hope that you look in that lens of, this was a marine industry-based community back in the 60s, a bunch of people got kicked out, now we're talking about limiting heights on buildings that should never be built here. Just think it through, you know? It doesn't solve any problems by, just because somebody wants to move here, we need to provide housing, and in the end, it's going to be old, wealthy, white people that end up here. We're already halfway there. And, I mean, we're paying the taxes for a brand-new school, and a lot of stuff, and that's great, I agreed with that. But if it just turns into a, you know, never-ending, more services for a bunch of people that are here for different reasons, other than to, again, property, how much am I making? Self-serving. And why can't we in Anacortes be the mold breakers and say, "No," for once? I'm not opposed to some growth, but when you start talking six, five, six-story buildings everywhere, and lined up, and gee, look, there's a view corridor, and you can see a seagull fly by once in a while, you know, it, just think it through. It, it just does not make sense to anybody I know in this town that I've talked to, and we've talked to a lot of our friends and people, I don't hear anybody talking about accepting that versus the recent survey of, apparently, the only three that were for it were the developers, basically. Duh. Who's paying them? A lot of times, the city is. That's all I ask, is just be fair to the people, we're the taxpayers, and we live here, and it affects us. And the traffic, and all the stuff that comes with it, it costs money, and time, and livability. So, you want to keep Anacortes a nice place? Find a moderate, reasonable, middle ground that fits, not just because the developers want to feel good about their investment. Appreciate your time, thank you.
Thank you, sir. Do we have anyone online requesting time to make a statement?
Yes, sir. Commissioner, there is-
Okay, can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
Okay, so I'd just like to add my name to those in opposition to the 65-foot building height. And I don't, I don't need to elaborate a lot, I think that speakers tonight and the letters have addressed it very well. My main reasons for opposing it, well, the main reason is that it'll change the whole feel of Anacortes. I think it's, as some speaker said, it's a bit bogus to say it's going to be a 65-foot high building, because the 10 or 15 additional feet of pop-ups makes it taller than that. So, I don't need to belabor it, but I, I just want to say that the letters and the speakers tonight in opposition to the 65-foot height have spoken very well. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Are there any other people? Okay, with that, we will close the public hearing, and proceed with discussion. Just to bring, make sure everybody's kind of up to speed, and to clarify a couple of things. The matter at hand is, is a city council requested a recommendation from the Planning Commission about what to do about the moratorium on the fifth, the fifth-story bonus height provisions in the R4 zone. Historically, the R4 zone, for decades, has been zoned at 40 feet. During the comprehensive planning process and the implementation of the new building codes, the Planning Commission recommended a bonus height option for that area, and at that time, it was agreed to by the city council and put into effect. Since then, the moratorium has been placed for the last couple of years, and we're now at a place where we have been requested to make another recommendation to the city council. Comments I made last time, I think, were adequate, I don't feel a need to add anything. Mr. Curtis, do you have anything you'd like to say?
I have a question for Mr. Meesmer, if you don't mind. How many community information sessions were held, and over how many years, regarding this matter?
Thank you, Mr. Curtis, good question. So, a little bit of background here on this. So during the 2016 comprehensive plan process, there were over 90 meetings that were held in regards to discussing several updates, including, a lot of folks have talked about the MJB properties, we're not here tonight to talk about the MJB properties, but during that comprehensive plan update process, many discussions on multifamily, types of different housing, and so forth. During the developer regulations update, which is the follow-up to the comprehensive plan, of course, that took about two years, with probably over 35 meetings, all open to the public.
Do I remember correctly that the city was recognized for the efforts it put into with respect to inclusivity and openness through this process?
So, the, City of Anacortes received the Governor's Award for Most Public Process on the Comprehensive Plan.
I just have one last question, there was some conversation tonight about taxpayers, families, citizens, and just a personal question for you, sir. You care about this community, and I presume you put the best interest, what's best for the community at, at the forefront?
I didn't quite catch all that, but if I could-
I presume that you care about the future of this community, and you're doing the best that you can with the staff, and the guidelines that you have to work within?
You know, I most definitely care about this community. One of the commenters suggested that the taxpayers foot the bill for taxes on these buildings, that's called a multifamily tax exemption. The city does not have that program in place, and does not subsidize housing.
Right. I think the point that I'm trying to get after here is that you're a community member, a taxpayer, we're community members and taxpayers, we also have a vested interest in the future of the community, and all those things have been factored into a lot of the conversations that have taken place through the 90-plus meetings that you mentioned. Thank you, Mr. Meesmer.
Mr. Graff, anything?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I mean, if you recall, I wasn't here for the last meeting, I was excused for a family vacation, so I hope you'll indulge me just a minute, so that I can catch up with where you were at on the 14th. I do understand there was conversations and discussions, and perhaps a proposed solution already discussed, but, Mr. Meesmer, if we could talk, so, the east, east side of Commercial, is there anything about that property that's zoned east of Commercial that would limit, or reduce, or restrict a developer from building a structure that would benefit from a bonus height opportunity?
There are no restrictions on the east side of Commercial Avenue.
I mean, I, I think valid recommendation, valid concerns, possible opportunities here. I would question why a developer hasn't looked in that area as well, but there's nothing that the city is doing to restrict a developer from looking at that side of Commercial.
There's nothing to prevent them from doing so, that's correct.
Okay.
Other than no available property at this time.
Okay. And then the only other comment I was going to make, I think, you know, focusing our discussions specific to the moratorium, and the, the west of, and the, and the Commercial to O, or Commercial to M concept options that we have to address, you know, if we talk further about that, I would be interested to know how folks were leaning on the 14th of December.
Anybody want to field that question? Just in terms of the, I know, one of my comments at the time was that it looked too much like a spot zone, that, that the, the decision to recommend the extra story, extra story bonus, was made for the entire R4 zone, and I didn't see why it would only be relevant to one part of that, since the area's been zoned for that, for the four stories, all
So, if I might, I'd just like to, I would just like to remind all the commissioners to please speak closely into the microphone. Thank you.
Mr. Juretsky, anything? Any, did that, was that clear?
So, for concept G, concept F, concept B, I mean, was there a concept that we're, that we're here to consider, was, to help clarify my mind, keep it simple, was it concept-
At the beginning of the meeting, we were asked to give some direction to the city staff.
Yep.
And we polled the council-
Yeah, no, I understand all of that, but I think the recommendation that, there was a proposed recommendation on the 14th, I believe, where we were leaning as a commission, and I'm just wondering if somebody could kind of clue me in on what that recommendation was.
We polled all five of the commissioners that were here at the time, and there was a pretty good consensus to, go ahead.
If I could help you out, sir. You're correct, we, we took an informal poll of all five of the commissioners that were here, and there was a unanimous agreement, non-binding, of course, to pursue option F.
Option F, yeah. Okay.
So the-
Thank you.
The material being presented today is, by the staff, is at our direction.
If I might, Mr. Chair.
Sure.
So, to kind of recap, the December 14th Planning Commission meeting, so, we had a fairly good discussion, in my opinion, on the concepts, concepts are on the screen in front of you, and through those concepts, the commissioners that were in the house at that time, all agreed unanimously to recommend item F to the city council. Item F is to leave the bonus height provisions in place with no changes. And so, at the end of that meeting, the planning commissioners indicated they'd like to see a draft findings and conclusions, which I've brought for you this evening.
Thank you, Mr. Meesmer.
I've got one question, actually, it may lead to other questions, Mr. Meesmer, but a comment was made from somebody in the audience, that builders get special breaks on development costs, permits, tax breaks, which we've already dispelled, that's not true. What about the comment about they get special breaks and special considerations, because they're builders?
I am not aware of any special breaks for developers or builders, unless they are building completely affordable housing. Good example of that is the Anacortes Family Center, they're building some multifamily units on the west side of Commercial, and they have to meet certain requirements for affordable housing, that means not more than 30% of an income, of 85% AMI. And basically, what it boils down to, developers don't get breaks unless they're building affordable housing, and I mean truly affordable housing, meeting the HUD guidelines.
Thank you. Again, I'd like to make a comment about that. The only way affordable housing works is with government subsidies and grants, there, and if builders and developers, and certainly understand maybe some concerns about them making too much money, but I don't think that you'll find too many builders that are, that think they're making too much money. And again, that's not said, that's not said flippantly. It's a tough business to make any money. Affordable housing cannot make any money, it has to be paid for by the taxpayers. That's where the taxpayers are paid, is to provide affordable housing, low-income housing, subsidized housing. Another comment that was made, I guess, well, nobody's, nobody's building anything east of Commercial. Well, because of the moratorium, nobody's building, applying to build anything anywhere until the moratorium is finalized, lifted, and gone, and you're shaking your head, but, I'm sorry?
At the hearings closed, this is a discussion for the commissioners-
Right. Nobody is going to go to the trouble, going forward, of paying for the engineering and the architectural, which, again, we have a builder sitting here, he can tell you, he can tell you what the, the cost of engineering and design for anything, building a garage, nobody's going to spend the money for a 50-foot building until they know they have a chance that they possibly could build it, and that's just common sense. Again, if the moratorium is lifted, we'll see activity around town where there's property that will allow it. I think Mr. Meesmer's already addressed that. Again, you know, one of the accusations, or one of the things, I guess, I sensed, I heard, was that we need to look at this. Well, I've been involved in this process, not as a planning commission member, for five years, it has been looked at for a long time, a lot of meetings were held, all of a sudden, you know, there's, the people doing this are, are paying bribes, or, or paying, are making political contributions to make this all, to work in their favor. I'm sorry, I guess I have a hard time when I hear those sort of comments, but I'd sure like to know, I'd like to see some proof of that. And another thing about out-of-town builders, I think, in my mind, and Mr. Meesmer knows because he monitors the permit process so carefully, things that are being built in this town, a majority of them are being built by local contractors, guys who went to high school here, I mean, they go back a long way. These aren't all out-of-town developers coming in and cutting a fat hog, they're local guys, they also live here, they also have kids that went to school here. Mr. Meesmer can correct me if I'm wrong, but again, the majority of the building that you see going on in Anacortes right now is being done by local guys, who have lived here for a while. here for a while, have invested here, and also have a goal to improve the town. And that's a comment, and I guess because it's a closed hearing, I'm sorry that you don't get to rebut that, you don't have a chance for a rebuttal, but again, that's my opinion of what I know and see in the community.
Thank you, Mr... Thank you. Dr. Martin, if you have anything to...
I have a question for Mr. Meesmer. How many five-story buildings have currently been built in the R4 zone?
Just one.
Just the Fidalgo flats?
In the R4 zone, yes.
In the R4. And just in what you have heard, and I know there's been a moratorium, but how many, are there people waiting to have this moratorium lifted so that they can shoot up a bunch of five-story buildings?
Not a bunch. I've heard of one on both sides of Commercial. And I think Mr. Juretsky kind of framed it very well, though there's not a moratorium on the east side of Commercial, folks could build there. They're concerned that if they got started on it, that there might be a moratorium put there as well.
So, coming back to the December 14th meeting, I know that there was one commissioner who mentioned that maybe we should listen a little bit more and have some leeway about, at least about the outdoor deck up above the fifth floor. I know for me personally, I wanted to make sure that we were honoring all of the meetings that have taken place, that we're honoring the recommendations of staff, but also, I care about how our community looks as well. And I think it's important that we listen to the public here, you know, maybe just now becoming aware of the 50-foot, I'm not sure what they're saying about the 65-foot, but 40-foot to 50-foot, 40-foot for decades, 50-foot now, in order to accomplish a goal, and that is to build more housing for people, when we know that we have an average of 101 new dwelling units built per year, and what we need is 131 units per year. We need to figure out a way to meet that goal. It makes sense to me to meet that goal with more density, and it makes sense to me for that density to take place in the corridor where the Commercial Avenue is. That's what makes the most sense, not to make a sprawl and not to deplete the beauty of this neighborhood. That's all I want to say.
Okay.
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
Are we going to continue the discussions or were you going to go somewhere else with this?
No, I just wanted to point out that whatever we decide tonight is a recommendation to the city council. This is really a policy question, which was proposed during the redesign of the development regulations, and was implemented at the time. And the city council certainly has the authority to change a policy decision, but we're being asked for our best recommendation based on the history of the planning and the information that we've obtained during our hearings. The information from this meeting, from the public input and from our discussions presumably is available to the city council as well for their deliberations. So, did you have other...
Well, I wanted to piggyback on Commissioner Martin's comments about, you know, making concessions, perhaps finding mitigation to some of the concerns about elevator shaft buildings going on top of a five-story building. I recall, I don't recall, I don't remember if this was during the MJB development process, and I don't want to confuse things here, but we talked about the reason why elevator shaft control systems can't go underground below the building. They always have to go above the building. You know, if that's a possibility and that's a mitigation that we can put as a condition to bonus height, I'm wondering if that would be something that the city council would consider. The other thing is, is that, you know, I'd like to go back to the concept that was selected last month and to hear if there was any discussion about perhaps entertaining the concept F, you know, the exclusion zone for some of the neighborhoods that are, that seem to be the most of concern with regards to having a large, tall building in their neighborhood, and whether that was considered and what reasons were given for not accepting or considering that one. Perhaps you could answer the first question and then we can discuss the second.
Elevator shafts. So, elevator shafts do have some equipment at the bottom of the shaft. Most of all the equipment, though, is above the uppermost floor. As the car comes up, it's got to have at least 10-foot above. And keep in mind that, you know, we're not talking about 800-square-foot elevator shaft. We're only talking about something maybe 12 by 12 at the most that's up there. And, you know, the upper-floor decks, that provides open space for the tenants of the building. It allows for them to get up on top and, you know, hang out with their neighbors. They also have ground floor open space. During the housing action plan process, one of the things that we heard was that the ground floor open space provides basically a barrier to some multifamily construction because it reduces the amount of property that can be built on. But, as part of the mitigation for a five-story building and to get those 600-square-foot units 50-foot tall, you have to provide almost 100 square foot of open space per unit. So, there are some trade-offs there, and I think our development regulations address that very well, as far as open space requirements, decks, the rooftop decks, I think, provide a lot of area for folks to hang out, you know. So, with the Fidalgo Square project, folks liked that project quite a bit, and it filled up within a month.
To be clear, I understand the open space, and I'm not questioning that. And I don't see the rooftop top decks as being as much of a concern as the, you know, the elevator shaft control building or the AC rooms or whatever the developer decides to put on the roof. And if there were possibilities to mitigate that by accommodating some of that in a basement or below ground, if that would be something that the city could, as, you know, a condition to the bonus height, you know, make that something that would have to be required. And I think you answered the question, so thank you. And then, concepts G versus F.
The unanimous recommendation of the members that were present at the time was to go with concept F, no change, and eliminating the moratorium. It was consistent with the recommendations from the city staff and also with the recommendations from the consultant, both of which recommended dropping the moratorium. So that was the basis for our recommendations.
I'm off for dropping the moratorium. I mean, if you recall, I've been a planning commissioner since 2016 when we started this whole process, so I've been there, been here since the start of this, and, you know, I recommended the bonus height as well as you. You know, city council voted unanimously for it. I was disappointed to see the moratorium, but I do think that, you know, listening to the public, listening to the neighbors, that perhaps maybe there are, there is or should be an opportunity to make a concession if we see that, or city council sees that as being a possibility, right? And so, you know, it seems like we're hearing, for the most part, from the neighbors close to the five-story building, and I'm not certain whether or not by excluding that area from this bonus height area would impact future development possibilities.
In my opinion, that basically creates a spot zoning issue, and I would have to ask the question, why not there?
Because the neighbors aren't happy about it? I mean...
My opinion only.
Okay.
But it would create a kind of a spot zoning issue.
And the city has never considered a spot zoning situation in the past?
Usually zoning-wide, you know, and we've talked about several different concepts on this. For instance, you know, taking the bonus height provisions to O Avenue, stopping, not going any further west, you know, all kinds of different variations. You know, and again, you know, in staff's opinion, you know, let the moratorium expire, continue on with the bonus height provisions as they stand. There was so much work that went into this during the development regulations, during the comprehensive plan process, and, Mr. Graff, you were there. We've heard from Makers and, yeah, Makers is a consultant for the city of Anacortes. We do pay them, but we don't pay them to write the report the way we want it. They write the report the way the facts are. And what we've been told is that we are lacking behind in the number of units that should be built to coincide with our population allocation for the next 20 years. We will be starting a comprehensive plan update that's due in 2025. We'll be looking at starting that this year with what's called an available lands analysis. And so that will educate the commissioners further on in the years to come, in the next couple of years, on what might need to be done with the comprehensive plan. So maybe that's a time to take another look at this, over the next two years.
I have to say, I'm not inclined to do any manipulation or fine-tuning of this particular policy.
I think that, well, I'll keep my opinions to myself.
Is there any further discussion with commission members?
Mr. Chair?
Mr. Curtis?
We find ourselves in a circumstance right now where it's a matter of supply and demand bound by geography, a matter of supply and demand bound by geography, and it's not going to solve itself. But I feel very strongly that turning the twin bridges at I-20 into a moat is not going to solve the problem that we have in this community of not enough housing for people to live who want to live here. With that said, Mr. Chair, I make a motion to approve Plan F, to allow the moratorium to expire with no changes to the bonus height provisions.
We have a motion. And we have a second. Shall we take the vote? Any, before that, any last discussions? Okay, let's proceed with the vote then.
Thank you, Commissioner. Curtis Hariva.
Yes.
Commissioner Graff. Commissioner McKenzie.
Yes.
Commissioner Juretsky.
Yes.
And Commissioner Martin.
I would have this similar pause, but I would also say I'm going to listen to the experts and say yes.
Thank you, Commissioner.
Thank you. I think with that, we have concluded our agenda for tonight. We'll close the meeting. Thank you all for coming. Appreciate your input.